...be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations for individuals or groups with disabilities and encourage this participation in city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this room. To better serve you when possible, please notify the city staff at least three business days in advance at 283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on media cable channel seven for customers with that service. Transportation two and from city of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled from DART Central Station located at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call DART on-call scheduling at 283-8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. All right, a forum is established. Do we have, I'm gonna look at this side of the room tonight, do we have action on our minutes from our July 18th meeting?
I'll move.
All those in favor of approval of the July 18th plan and zoning commission meeting minutes, please signify by raising your hand. All right, are there any abstentions? And any nay votes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. The consent agenda tonight is as follows. A request from Christiansen Properties located at 610 16th Street, 613 and 619 High Street for determination whether to rezone property from C to general retail or highway-oriented commercial district to MPC to allow development of six single-family dwellings. So, is the applicant present tonight? And is this your expectation that the staff recommendation you agree with? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wished to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to pull this item from consent? All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
I move the consent agenda for the Christiansen Property.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of consent, item number one, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. Now, under our public hearing items tonight, it is my understanding that item number three, which is a city-initiated request for property at 720, 727, 730 East Second Street and 827, 861 East Second, 205 through 221 Maple Street, 350 Maple Street, 101 through 284 East Center Street, 832 through 848 East Fourth Street, 225 East Center Street and 200 Des Moines Street, that the, which the property includes a Bridge District number two, LLC Bridge District Town Homes Owners Association, Bridge District Master Association and Bridge District Condominiums and Velocity Condominium Association and other individual town homes, that there is a request to move this item to our next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
On August 15th.
Yes, August 15th.
And are any of these individual applicants here tonight? And is that your wish to move this item to August 15th? All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wished to hear this item tonight? All right, seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wished to hear this item tonight? All right, then, action on deferring this item to August 15th?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jan. All those in favor of moving the continuing action item number three to our August 15th meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Similarly, item number four, which is a request from Sears Properties for review and approval of a site plan, luxury limousine and coach bus under design guidelines for property located at 1601 East Army Post Road to allow for development of 2,800 square foot building and a 27,000 square foot building to be used for garaging vehicles, that similarly this applicant wishes to continue this item. Is that correct?
Yes, madam chair.
All right, is applicant present?
I don't know if anybody's gonna be present for...
All right, is there anybody in the audience that wished to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wished to pull this, or hear this item tonight? Seeing none, action on item number four?
I'll move continuance to August 15th.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. So that leaves us with item number two. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning ordinance, planning and design ordinance, and citywide zoning map amendment. And so, who is introducing the...
Planning administrator.
Okay?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the City of Des Moines. This evening is the second public hearing, or continuation of the public hearing regarding the new zoning ordinance for the code. As a reminder for people who may not have been here for the first hearing, this is the first comprehensive rewrite of our city's zoning ordinance in 54 years, so this is a pretty monumental evening where we are asking the commission to take action on the proposal that is in front of you. At the last meeting, there were a lot of comments that were received regarding, I would say primarily regarding the single-family residential provisions that were in the code. And so, last Friday, when we sent out a list of substantive and minor revisions to the proposed draft, which you all received and were posted on the city's website, the Plan DSM website, we then had noted that there would be some additional revisions that were proposed, which were sent out today to you. And so, I can go through each of the substantive revisions with you if you would like, or I can primarily focus on the revisions that were sent out today, at least because I think those were, the ones that were sent out today probably addressed the majority of the comments that were made, I think, at the last meeting. But we're happy to go through all of those. Then, I can show maps of each of the comprehensive plan amendments. There are 23 of those comprehensive plan amendments, and those are simply to make certain that the comprehensive map and the zone, proposed zoning map are consistent with each other, which is required by state code. So, those were the 23 revisions that we had come up with where there were conflicts currently that need to be corrected on the Plan DSM land use map. And then, finally, we also sent out revisions to chapter 82 today, and it was like 25 pages long, but if you looked at it, 24 of those pages were strikeout text deleting all of chapter 82, existing chapter 82 from the code, because it has been replaced with the proposed new chapter 135, which you've already received and is in the code, the site plan and design guidelines. So, with that, what I'd like to do is just quickly jump into the substantive revisions that were sent out today, and those were highlighted in yellow and green on the document which was sent out and posted today on the website. And the first thing I wanted to point out was, in the draft you see, or in the document you received on Friday, one of the changes that was made to try and address concerns you heard last time was regarding the basement requirement. And previously, or in the current draft, it said that a basement was required for all single-family dwellings, and that could only be waived as a type one design alternative if there was water table issues or sewer access issues for the grade level of that basement. Staff could waive it in that situation. And then, it said that anything else was a type two review. Based on the comments and based on the direction from the Plan DSM Steering Committee, we have stricken the requirement for basements. So basements are no longer required for single-family detached residential house types A, B, C, or D. Then, getting to the changes that were sent today, we, this, we have prepared text that addresses the Plan DSM Steering Committee's recommendation for revisions to the minimum square footages for house types A, B, C, and D. And those are broken out by house type. The direction was, in general, and Tyler, if you could flip to the overhead, or I'm sorry, the computer screen. So in general, the discussion at the steering committee was, they basically, as you recall at the last meeting, we talked about how there was a, for a one-story home, the code said there was a 1,400 square foot minimum. For a one-and-a-half-story home, there was a 1,600 square foot minimum. And for a two-story home, there was an 1,800 square foot minimum. And that was a flat standard across the city. There was an opportunity through the design alternatives to seek a 30% reduction in that square footage through a type one design alternative from staff. That was available across the city. What we'd said was, in infill areas, there'd be greater flexibility. On the greenfield areas or the periphery, there'd be less flexibility. There was concern that that did not give enough by right reduction in square footage, and it really wasn't defining what was an infill area and what was a greenfield area by zoning districts. And so, what is in front of you tonight is our best attempt to provide text that does just that at the direction of the Plan DSM Steering Committee. So if you look at the zoning map, the yellow areas and kind of those dark orange areas that are kind of out on the periphery of the map, those are generally N1A, N1A, N1B, and N2 zoning districts in the City of Des Moines, those yellow areas. And then the remaining districts that were residential, single-family housing is a permitted use are mainly the green and dark green areas on the map that are at this, more at the center of the map on the interior neighborhoods. So Beavertale, Drake, Riverbend, those types of areas. So, what we've said is, those are where there's typically smaller lots today and where there are typically smaller houses today. Out on the periphery, those yellow-orange areas are more existing or planned for larger lots and larger square footages. So, house type A is primarily allowed in the yellow and those dark orange areas. So, the change that has been made to the house type A is that, again, we used to require a basement. So if you look at the provision for a single-story home with a basement, there's a by right reduction of 100 square feet less than the previous standard. So now it's 1,300 square feet. If there's a basement provided, full basement provided, they can have a 1,300 square foot instead of 1,400 square foot. If there's no basement, it still is the 1,400 square foot standard for a one-story home. For a one-and-a-half-story home, again, there's a 100 square foot reduction if there's a big included. If there's not a basement, it stays at the 1,600 square foot. And for the two-story, if there's a basement, they get 100 square foot reduction by right down to 1,700. If no basement, they stay at the 1,800 square foot. For that house type, then, we've proposed that there be a 15% type one design alternative available under the code that could be, could lessen the square footage in those, in those outlining yellow areas. Again, that's a staff review. It is a reduction from where we were at with the 30%, but since we've already recommended a by right provision, we've kind of split the previous relief into a portion that's by right and a portion that's, that's a type one design alternative. They could still seek type two design alternative to go more than 15% relief to those, to those square footages in those areas. The remainder of the changes are the same, are different from house type A, but are the same for the remaining three house types. B, C, and D are house types that are generally allowed in those green areas that are on the map. And so, in those areas, previously, a 1,400 square foot home with a basement was what was proposed in the code. Now, for a single-story home, that drops to 1,150 square feet if a basement is provided. If no basement is provided, that single-story home would be 1,250 square feet. So it'd be 150 square feet reduction from the previous 1,400 standard. For a one-and-a-half-story dwelling, which was at 1,600 square feet previously, if it has a basement, it can be 1,300. If no basement, it has to be 1,400. And for the two-story dwelling, again, that used to be 1,800 across the board. For a two-story dwelling with a basement, they can go down to 1,400 square feet. If there's no basement, it has to be 1,500 square feet. And so that's the same for all three house types, B, C, and D. Again, those house types would be eligible for a 15%, up to a 15% reduction through, through a type one design alternative. And if they wanted a greater reduction than that, they would be subject to a type two design alternative. So that was the direction from the Plan DSM Steering Committee to try and address those concerns. I did today do, our Permit Development Center did poll roughly 68 recent single-family plans that have been approved, either through stock plan reviews or through building permits. And those were 68 plans by seven different single-family housing developers. We were somewhat limited in time, but we build 200 houses a year, single-family homes in Des Moines a year right now is our average. So, we polled about 68 and did some analysis on those. Of the 68 homes that were just randomly polled, 49 or 72% of the homes would comply with the by right standards that are proposed this evening. Another 10 or almost 15% of the total would comply with a design, type one design alternative. So, between type one design alternative and by right, you know, we're at almost 86% of the homes that, the plans that we reviewed would comply with the, with the new code. And then finally, nine out of the 68 homes that we polled would require a type two review, and that's about 13%. So, we think that the revisions have done what they were intended to do, which was create more by right ability to, to build the homes without getting a type one relief. And I think that, as we've talked about, just with, for example, on the design guideline or the design standards that are in chat, Article Four of Chapter 135, you know, that's a, that's a minimum bar for design, and we know there are some projects that have been really creative, and it's really hard to write a code that addresses the really creative projects, but also regulates the remainder of the projects. So, the Kraus Center, for example, has been brought up, wouldn't comply probably with our design standards. As I've said, I have no doubt that the Kraus Center would get approved through a type two review in this code 100 times out of 100. But the thing is, we have to design a code that, that is trying to address kind of the middle or the middle of the bell curve, if you want to think of it that way. And I think that the proposed standards, the revised standards for the square footage that are doing that, 86% of the ones that were sampled would fall within a by right or type one review, which is just an administrative review by staff. So, on the square footages, it follows what was directed by the Plan DSM Steering Committee last week, and we just had to put it into code language, and that took a little while to take their recommendation and insert it properly into the code. We had to do it by house type because if we just did it by zoning district alone, that would make the relief to the square footage a zoning board of adjustment decision versus a staff or Plan and Zoning Commission decision. And as you recall, this code is designed to move a lot of those design-related matters into either administrative review or Plan and Zoning Commission rather than Board of Adjustment Review. So we've been consistent in how we've approached that. So, that was the square footage changes for single-family residential. Also noted in yellow were just what I was talking about, the changes to the type one and the type two design alternatives to allow for that 15% variation or greater than 15% Additionally, we did have two additional stakeholder meetings this week where groups came in and met with staff about concerns. One was the zoning in the area of Riverbend, and there was a change proposed on the east side of East Sixth Avenue. And basically, the proposal was to extend the M1, MX1 zoning that is located up in that area to more parcels along the corridor. And so, this is Sixth Avenue. It was extended to include, to the north up to Jefferson and to the south down to, I forget the address of the property, this is the remaining vacant property that's on the, on the, on the corridor. And this was at the request of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association president and a board member that, that came in and out with us. And then, there's been a, we had a meeting this week with a, with Hubble Development, and there were concerns regarding phasing of site plans. And right now, the code has a two-year time limit on a site plan approval. Their concern was, if we have a market downturn, that site plan could be voided and they'd have to start over. And so what we've allowed for is, when they get their initial approval, is to show a phasing and a schedule for that phasing that, that may go beyond the two years. In this draft, it's a 10-year max, and they need to comply with the schedule that they submit or amend that and come back in. So the example that we had where that is, it's happened in Des Moines, was they came in with a site plan for the second and Grand Roundstones in about 2006, I believe. They built the first phase, which were the three-story units along Grand Avenue, and recession, 2007, 2008 hit, they did not build any more units on the northern portion of property. They ended up coming back and amending that site plan to construct the two-story units that are north of that, which was approved by the commission. But under this scenario, they could have done a phasing plan possibly for that and could have, could have extended the timeframe on that, that two years. So, the language that was provided was to simply provide the opportunity for phasing. So I don't know, if you have any questions on that? And then finally, I was just noting that chapter 82, we say those revisions, and that was primarily just deleting major, major sections of chapter 82, existing 82 today to accommodate the replacement by chapter 135. So with that, I don't know if you had questions on the other items that were substantive items that were provided to you last Friday? I'd be happy to talk about any of those. Otherwise, I think we can turn it over for more public comment, and then we'll have a rebuttal when you're done. So, thank you very much. Again, very monumental evening, and we are asking for your recommendation this evening. Thank you.
All right, thanks Mike. Any questions for Mike before we go to public hearing? All right, seeing none, then, as is the case if you were with us at our last meeting, we would appreciate if you are interested in speaking to sign our information sheet, which is up here front, and I give you name and address, and move on up in a line if you'd like to.
Hi, my name is Rosio Nunez. So I'm one of the homeowners from Habitat. I bought my house three years ago, July 2016. So I bought the house, okay, my address, 2501 Logan Avenue, Des Moines, 50317. I bought the house for 1,25,000. So three years later, I'm very sure it's now 1,600. I add my garage. So, the first year, I add my garage without electricity and drywall. So the second year, I put a drywall, electricity, and fence. So this is my third year, my third year for my next project is a finished basement. So I have four kids, and I would like each kid have a, each bedroom. So probably I had to go to the basement because the kids, they don't want to go there. But that's fine, anyway. So I'm actually paying five, under, a little bit under the 550 with a scroll. So before I fill out a paper for Habitat, I was looking for a house in a regular market. So it was kind of really expensive for a single man with four kids. So, and I was looking for different option, options. So my best option was Habitat because they have a, a full payment, you know, it's not really expensive, and I can pay my other bills plus the house. So, and I always want my own house because that's security for the kids, that's the base for the family for me. No vacation, no new car. I mean, it's nice to have those two, but house is first. So, after my divorce, that was seven, eight years ago, something like that, after my divorce, so I went to the shelter because I don't have any family here for three months. And after that, so I was in another program called Harton Hill. It's a housing transitional. So for five years, working in goals, saving money for down payment for the house and be prepared, you know, for future. And after that, so my social worker, he helped me for fill out the papers for Habitat. He needs not use the house, they have classes, you know, how save your money, when can, it's time to replace the roof, how can you fix some items? So I had to do a suite inquiry for 100 hours because I need, I wanted a new construction. So, and that was good because before I never worked in construction, so that was my first time, I bring families and, you know, I mean, friends, sorry. And so I can learn a little bit how fix stuff, so instant pay someone and speed more money. And, yeah, that was nice. I was working to help for my suite inquiry and, and the store, the what they have, but I like more construction because I can learn more. So, and, yeah, I'm doing good. I'm working in 3E a long time ago, I think 13 years ago, something like that. And they are very flexible with me, and so I was, when I was doing my suite inquiry, I was working every single Saturday until done my suite inquiry. I think I done my suite inquiry for 100 hours in three months. So I was working every single Saturday, or sometimes I take a day off of work, you know, I can't done faster. So, and that's it, that's my history. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Madam Commissioner and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. I'm Lance Henning. I serve as President and Executive Director of Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. We're at 2,200 East Euclid here in Des Moines. We are here because Habitat does care for Des Moines and its neighbors, they matter to us. A thriving Des Moines matters to our 17,000 volunteers that'll be out this year. It matters to have a strong Des Moines, and quality housing matters to the 100-plus churches and businesses that'll partner with Habitat this year. Lifting up neighborhoods and quality home matter to Rosio. It matters to the 350 Habitat homeowners. It matters to the 1,200 Des Moines households Habitat has helped partner with on homeowner occupied repairs through our Rock the Block program. Habitat is here for the cost of home because a home shouldn't cost... program. Habitat is here for the cost of home because a home shouldn't cost anywhere near half your paycheck. This zoning, as proposed and amended, will raise the cost of home. Habitat is here to bring awareness that zoning code will have a significant impact on the future of housing affordability. The Capitol Crossroads Workforce Housing Study references increasing housing supply by 57,000 owner occupied units, a half under 175,000. If you break that out annually, that's 2,850 owner occupied units per year across the metro. Metrowide, there was, last year, there was 1,990 owner occupying units created. And based on last year's metro numbers, Des Moines had about 9% of those on the owner occupied units. With the population, 47% of the metro area, Des Moines should have a larger share. And getting housing right and doing it smart will be a tide that lifts all boats. Doing it smart means including strategies that maintain and improve the existing housing stock. Maintaining and improving the housing stock is important, but it does not increase the supply. Doing it smart means including strategies that promote affordability by creating certainty and reducing barriers for a new supply of housing. Try to do this with a more restrictive zoning code and with discretionary approvals. It won't be a tide. It will be a tidal wave that will swamp many boats, particularly Des Moines residents earning less than 90,000 per year. Even if the city is not interested in increasing the housing supply and only wants to maybe do the share it's been doing at 9% of the market, based on the workforce housing report, the city still needs to increase the annual supply of owner occupied units by 50%. An important strategy to increasing housing supply is to increase certainty and reduce the barriers to create housing. Quality housing should not be defined by larger square footage and required garages. These are barriers to the cost of home. They are barriers to creating housing. For Habitat and the areas we've been most active, our homes regularly are valued twice the average sale price of the surrounding area. So looking at some typical homes that we helped to create, here's a two-story, three-bedroom, two-bath. It's 1,400 square foot, no basement, no garage. If we understand the last-minute amendments correctly, it would be eligible under a type one exemption on the square footage. It would not be under the garage. On Watson, there's 10 of those homes that are adding value to the neighborhood. They are twice the value of the surrounding area of the neighborhood. The most common plan that we've built across the city is a one-and-a-half story, three-bedroom, one-bath, 1,100 square feet. It has a partial basement, no garage. If we understand the last-minute amendments correctly, it would not meet the type one exception under the zoning. We would have to go for a type two on square footage and a type two for no garage. That garage is not ours. That's neighbors. In our ranch plan, a single-story house on there, it is a two or three-bedroom, two-bath. And based on the zoning, it would be above grade, is 840 square feet. And we finished the basement. So the finished space is 1,300 square feet on there. And so it has the 840 square feet, as we understand the last-minute amendments, that they would not meet a type one exception. And so it would be a type two coming before you for an exception on square footage and also for the garage.
Do you have a bottom of plans?
Okay. So we do want to say quality housing should not be defined by larger square footage and required garages. These are barriers to the cost of home and they are barriers to creating housing. We do applaud the removal of the basement requirement. We are trying to absorb and understand these last-minute amendments. We respectfully request the Plan of Zoning to allow more time to be able to understand these and be able to move the decisions to a future time. Habitat for Humanity also respectfully requests there to be a reduction of square footage requirement and no garage requirement. There are quality houses throughout the city with no garages and also want to correct a few misinformation that has been shared. One, the appreciation of a garage versus a no garage. We've looked at four of our neighborhoods that we're most active on and there is no discernible difference in the appreciation between a garage and a no garage. Some neighborhoods, it's a half percent for a garage. Another neighborhood, it's 1% higher for the houses with no garage. Also, as regularly been talked about, that the reason we need garages is for the complaints against code enforcement. Looking at the data through 2017 and 18, it's about 50% rental and 50% owner occupied. When you look at the complaints that are made for owner occupied housing, 64.3% of those have garages. There are ways, other ways to be able to have people store their outside types of activities and things. As you can see in the Watson houses, we provide a shed with every house. There's room for bikes. There's room for mowers. There's room for gas cans. And the one of the last things to be thinking about is that for every thousand dollars that you add to the cost of home, you're pricing out 339 Des Moines households from the opportunity to own their own home. Depending on how these amendments all work out, you're still pricing out 10,000, up to 20,000 households from the opportunity to purchase a home. Let's increase the certainty and unlock affordability. Let's write a code that's smart for our community and smart for the cost of home. Let's avoid a tidal wave around housing affordability that is swamping and pricing out more than 10,000 Des Moines households. Let's make housing affordability part of the code. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, quick question. So I realize that you're talking about affordability in general and not just for Habitat. But I guess I'm curious, if Habitat were to regularly go through type two relief, what would be the impact?
I shared last time, if we had to go for every building permit, that we would essentially have to be hired another staff person and then the uncertainty that comes with that. So when we looked at how many of our houses that we're doing that come before planning zoning or become before board of adjustment, that was about 36%. So it meant, over the last five years, 64% of our homes went through no additional process to be able to go through. So we met the building permit requirements. We built the home. There were infill lots of record being able to do that. This would change the process in that we would regularly be needing to come before you to be able to ask for exceptions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of Commission, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Let me start by saying I've worked on Habitat homes before. I ran for office a few years ago and one of the things that I campaigned on was finding a way to give credits to developers to develop infill housing. I think infill housing is important. And what I would say is that there's a, as a city, we need to recognize the difference between infill housing and greenfield housing clearly. I live in the Easter Lake area. We have a lot of greenfield opportunities out there, one of the, probably one of only two in the city, the other being up in the Brooks Run area in the northeast part of Des Moines. I read, first, I've tried to follow these stuff. I've been to public meetings. Apparently I missed one. So my name's on the email list. I apparently didn't get an email that there was another meeting going on. So if I'm a little behind on what's actually occurred, I apologize. When it comes to building, we're talking about in infill that maybe there's not room for a garage. Maybe there's not a need for a basement. I come from an area where it's slightly different, where the demand is for a three-car garage. And I live in a neighborhood where sheds are not allowed. So the city needs to look at this, that there's not a single housing type of stock. And I think they've tried to recognize some of that. But I think some of the people who are opposing some of the more lenient measurements, let's call it, in what they're saying, are not looking at the city as a whole. In the paper this morning, it was stated, the city's trying to do a tax grab. Well, maybe they haven't noticed, but it takes taxes to run a city. And this city has about 40% of its property that we can't get any tax out of. And if we determine that we're going to put up a bunch of $150,000 houses over every empty lot in the city, there will not be enough money at the current tax rates to run this city, which means every one of those people that thinks they're stepping into $150,000 house that they can afford will quickly find out that their taxes are not what they can afford and they'll vacate that house to go someplace where they can. So it's, the cost of the house is not the single most important thing. There's maintenance of the house. There's the taxes on the house. All those things come after the initial purchase. And I don't think we can lose sight of those things. In talking, my concern about initially, when it was a 30%, and I understand some of the restrictions, now I still need to look at that, where they've reduced what the reductions can be. At your next meeting, there's going to be a PUD coming out of my neighborhood where they want to put in 200 houses and eight, single-family houses and 80 by attached houses. So my concern at the last public meeting I went to, which was I thought the last public meeting, was around what happens if somebody comes in and wants to take 200 houses in an area that's fairly well-developed with housing stock that's got a pretty good assessed value and decides they're going to reduce those values of square footage by that 30%, requiring no notification to the neighborhood, requiring only somebody at the city to put their John Henry on it. And all of a sudden, we have a whole neighborhood of 900 square foot houses being built right next to a neighborhood of three-car garages and 18 to 2,000 square foot houses in an area that can support that. I mean, I understand there are people that need affordable housing and I'm all for affordable housing. But the houses that are going up in Ankeny and West Des Moines and on the golf courses down by Norwalk, those people have money and they could put that money in a house down by Easter Lake. Easter Lake Park, Ewing Park, some of the best park space in this entire city. 170-acre lake that you can't buy a house anyplace else in this town and put it that close to 170-acre lake. And once we fill that up with small houses, we'll never have 170-acre lake again in the city that you can put housing around. Sometimes I think we take a short-sighted look at where we're going with things. I mean, we've let that land sit out there. The city's incorporated that land for 15 years ago in some cases. And we're willing to zone it into a place where a developer who doesn't care about Des Moines, quite frankly, and they can talk to me after the meeting and tell me how much they do, but they're going to put up 200 houses and they're going to move on to the next place. And that same developer is probably operating under company number X, putting in a small house out there. And the same guy, his name's on company Y, and he's out at Echo Valley putting up twice the house. So I hope as a city that we recognize the resources that we have available to us and the need we have for a tax base going forward. And that there is a place for affordable housing. But Des Moines cannot be the affordable housing capital of the state or of the metro. I mean, there needs to be a shared value of affordable housing around the metro, not just in Des Moines. And it can't just be people in Des Moines who are championing that cause. So I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Hello. I'm Chelsea Lovely. I'm at 1253 East 12th. I chair the Capital Park Neighborhood Association. Talking with my neighbors, I think we echo a lot of what we heard from Lance Henning here. I, for example, bought a house without a garage and I've been happy there. We had a nice shed that the siding matched and everything. And so I think having outdoor storage is important, but I don't think having a garage is, particularly for infill neighborhoods. And I know there's a lot of different types of infill neighborhoods as we were just hearing. So I came up here to say, I think we should actually restore that 15% variance back to the 30 where it started. I was very encouraged to see lower minimums because I live in a neighborhood with small lots and I want to have new houses near me. And then I saw that with the minimums, the variance got smaller. So the baseline minimum is actually still about the same. So I would encourage you to make that administrative variance up to 30% again where it started. And I would also encourage you to waive the requirement for a garage. And maybe that means getting more specific with the infill areas. But I think for urban core neighborhoods, like the one where I live, just a mile from the Capitol, it doesn't always make sense to have a garage. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Tolicson. I'm the CEO of Hubble Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway. Most of my comments probably aren't very self-serving. We're covered by PUDs in just about everything. And we worked with Mike and staff and we got all those clarifications pretty well done. So there's probably some tweaking that has to be done. But for the most part, we've come to agreement with all that kind of stuff. And I'm on the Plan DSM Committee. I was on there with Greg, who attended just about every meeting, as did I. And, but a lot of what I got concerned about through all this, that I think we should be aware of, is what are we doing to our marketplace? I mean, who builds in Des Moines? You guys know who builds in Des Moines? 60% of the houses built are built by three builders. Hubble, Jerry's, Madden. Townhomes, 94% built by two builders. Hubble Homes and Jerry's Homes. That's okay. I prefer that there are a lot more builders, believe it or not. Activity breeds activity. We're not attracting the building community to Des Moines. And it's pretty easy right now. All I gotta do is go get a building permit if it's all right, can build a house. And we still are not attracting them. So someone has come up with the idea that if we make it more difficult, that the building community is just going to come here and build. I don't think so. Why would you do that? I'm going to keep building. I got my PUDs and I'm going to finish them out. And it'll take me longer than my career to build out everything. And most of what I'm building is in downtown, but we have River Woods. We have a large community down there. We're finishing out in Summers Field and we're trying to do one other one in the northeast side. It'll also be a PUD. But what about everybody else? Who is attracting these other builders? That's what I'm concerned about. In Plan DSM Steering Committee, we didn't talk about the architectural part of all this. We didn't talk about, you know, square footage of houses. I'm not aware of anywhere in the country that starts telling you what size of house you have to do. It's usually controlled by the size of the lot, which is the zoning thing. You had a minimum lot size. You pretty much know if you're going to do that. Yes, you could put a small lot on a large, a small house on a large lot. You can anywhere in the metro area. Do people do it? Rarely. We've never had anybody do it. The size of the lot, which relates to the price of the lot, reflects the total cost of what you build. I've heard the urban legend for years that residential doesn't pay for itself. Nobody, nobody, including the staff, have ever given us any proof. NHB has produced document after document after document that shows residential more than pays for itself. So don't go down the path and drink that Kool-Aid about, hey, listen, you know, residential doesn't carry its own weight. It does. It does. In every metro area. It carries its own weight. It does in Des Moines as well. I don't do the Habitat for Humanity type housing. You know, I have never built anything without a two-car attached garage, except for Anum. I guess we did that nine homes for nine families in nine days and there weren't any garages. We don't really build that. As I said, we're covered by PUDs. Our probably lowest-priced home, maybe in River Woods, which was a Clark development we took over. You can maybe, if you get there quickly, you might be able to get a home for two and a quarter, 250, something like that. But that's the low end of our marketplace. But again, we need more builders in our community. And if you think this will do it, okay, pass it on. But if you think you need to figure out a way to attract builders, we're already giving a huge tax abatement to entice them. That's not, doesn't seem to be working. So let's require a larger home or require a minimum square footage. For a lot of them, it's not going to make any difference. But I build below all those square footages. River Woods, a lot of square, the two-story there is a 1,400 square foot two-story standard home, which is going to cost you two and a quarter, it's $250,000. That's it. That's what the market wants in that neighborhood. And if you look at the neighborhood, that's kind of what Lloyd Clark built there. He think he started that 20-some years ago. think he started that twenty-some years ago. I want us, as a community, we, we just need to grow, we need to be able to respond to the entire market, and I, and I'm not sure that requiring a bunch of these restrictions is going to do it. Again, I'm here, he already got me, I have my PUDs, and I'll keep building. Okay? We talked our things, we're okay if you want to recommend, okay, onto a city council, we've worked through our details, we could, you could, for our perspective, you could delay it for a week or two, so Glenn can get her comments finalized, but she's so close, we can probably work together with him and get him finalized before the city council meeting. I understand, we're wearing Mike out, he's going to go on vacation, he needs one, he's a, he spent a lifetime on this thing already, and it's only been a couple of years. I appreciate what he's done. It's a lot of hard work, I wouldn't want to do it. It's why they only do it, what, every fifty-six years? So, he doesn't have to be around for the next one. It's a lot of work, but, but we don't need to rush it either, okay? We need to think through all these things we're working on, is this really what we want to do? Is this really going to help Des Moines be the Des Moines we all want it to be? Because, believe me, I don't like being the only guy out here building a whole bunch of this stuff. I want a lot of other builders throughout the community to build with us, because that's, again, activity breeds activity, that's what's going to make us stronger. That's my comments, thanks.
Rick, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Habitat, hello. Habitat asked for a continuance, a little bit more time.
Mike, excuse me, they're saying down here, they can't hear you.
Habitat has asked for a little bit more time. Are you asking for more time, or are you saying your issues can be solved before council?
Our, our issues could probably, yeah, I understand why they would want to do it, work out a lot of those architectural square footage, which are pretty onerous for them, and for probably a lot of other builders coming in. Our issues, I think Glenn and Mike, we, we have ours pretty well-worked out, Ashley, for the most part. That's the two attorneys, and they gotta work it. Mike and I worked it out, we're easy, okay? But, we don't have to write anything down. Glenn and Ashley have to. So, we're okay, we think we can get ours through with the minor tweaks that have to be done on the PUD process. We really just wanted to make sure we had a process, that if you're not going to have a PUD process, that type-two process really allows the same thing. And I think we worked out, there was a few details that, that made it not so, and I think we clarified them and got that taken care of.
Okay, who, do you?
You mentioned several times about wanting to attract other builders.
Yes.
In your opinion, what would need to be included or excluded to attract more builders?
I think a big part of Des Moines is we actually, Des Moines makes it a little more difficult than it needs to be. Just, right now, when you think about it, you're, we just go in and get a building permit, for a lot of people, now they're going to have to go in for a community development approval, along with the getting a building permit, which is probably going to be more difficult. We try to encourage them that we want you to come to Des Moines. The inspection process in Des Moines, building inspection scares a lot of builders. And it's really because Des Moines is, is so much larger and had so many more problems, they have inspectors for each area. So, we have a plumbing inspector, electrical inspector, a structural inspector, versus in the suburbs, they have one, one residential inspector that just deals with it. You don't have to schedule three different inspection, and it's, with different inspectors, you get one person. That's huge. That's huge, and trying to attract people and make it easier for them to build here, and, and just making it part of the community. That's just building houses, and I think Des Moines can do more outreach with the HBA and say, okay, come to Des Moines, okay? We have great places for build. I think what they're doing in buying blighted houses and cleaning up those lots and making available, is going to be a, a big incentive to, that builders will start looking at it, because there are some other areas to build in. You know, we're downtown, so we know what urban revitalization is all about. Other builders see our success, they want to come in, but they don't exactly know where to go. And it's some of these next ring of homes, I think, is going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I was going to ask you a question, you said, we are close to having our details worked out?
Yes.
Who's the we?
Hubbell Realty Company.
Just Hubbell.
Yeah.
You're not speaking for anybody else?
No. And really, what we went in, our biggest concern, and, and Mike and Glenn know this, we, the PUD process is what we go through on everything, as you well know, we, we come in front of you and all that. We wanted to make sure there was a process, we, you know, we prefer just keep the PUD process. Mike assured us that actually type-two is probably a better process for us, and we worked through those details, and I, I would, I would agree with him. It should be, because if we get it done right, if you approve us, then I can, you know, I'm done, I don't even have to go to city council. So, that part of the process would actually make it easier.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Tolicson? Thank you very much, and thanks for your service on our committee.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brandon Patterson, I am the Workforce Development Director for Home Builders Association of Des Moines and Iowa. On behalf of nearly six hundred members of the HBA of Greater Des Moines, who employ thousands of central islands contributing to tens of millions of dollars in annual economic impact to our economy, we thank city staff and planning zoning commissioners. We especially thank council members Coleman, Gatto, and Westegard for working to find more common ground and more of a common sense approach to updating code and zoning for new homes in Des Moines. Members of the commission, you know our concerns over minimum square footage, siding, and other mandates, materials, and orders of garages and basements on all new homes. I will shorten HBA remarks in light of the changes just announced this afternoon to city staff recommendations. We spoke with our National Home Builders Association, who took at, who, who look at similar zoning proposals from across the country, and there are no zoning codes that have minimum square footage requirements. There are multiple cities dealing with lawsuits or issues that we are talking about tonight, and we suggest that we all take a step back and make certain what is proposed is thoughtful and legal. We ask you to table any recommendation to the Des Moines City Council for at least one week, so those most immediately affected by changes to the ordinance have time to read through what has just been handed to us. Our association members, citizens, and most importantly, you, as appointed planning zoning commissioners, must fully understand how the changes will affect those who want to live and work in Des Moines in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chad in Halfhill, live at seventeen oh eight Plaza Circle, representing Indigo Dawn, which is a rehabilitation and development company in Des Moines. First, I would like to applaud Mike and his staff, that, what you're doing, and frankly, what this board is overseeing is, per, per me, long overdue and very challenging. My concern, I have, I have three points that I wanted to focus on today. And, one was the, I'm trying to keep my focus, so I apologize, the size requirements. I've never understood the idea of putting a limitation on design, I don't fully understand it, but my bigger, my larger concern is housing prices and the cost of construction will continue to go up. So, if we don't address this now, the changes that are made now, if we can't figure out a way to allow flexibility going forward, our zoning code will be immediately obsolete, and we will be back before you next year, the year after, changing the code so fast that you'll be revisiting it in a short future, and we'll have to readdress all this. I'd rather see it done now, and very thoughtfully. I have no qualms with slowing it down, because I think we have a larger concern about the potential cost of construction in our community, and particularly within the urban center. And so, for me, when I've given review in past, I've loft, I've often lobbied to talk about accessory dwelling units, or reduce square footages. I think that's really, from my point of view, doing a rehabilitation of existing structures, it is not getting any cheaper, it's getting harder and harder to provide solutions in, in neighborhoods where the property values are declining. The other challenge that I see with that is, and this is a little bit on a personal bias, I want to let the market dictate a little bit of that. That's, of course, risk to me as a business owner, if I choose to invest in, let's say, Cheatham Park. It's a prop, it's an area that I've, with a partner of mine, I've acquired two properties, and I've decided to invest in and bring them up. That's a neighborhood that the city has choose, chosen not to prioritize, because through consultancy, they're prioritizing in other neighborhoods, because the investment in those neighborhoods will raise those neighborhoods quicker. I think that was a good strategy. We choose to work in a neighborhood where we like the housing stock, we think there's lots of potential, because it's near downtown. However, we are working in square footages that are very small, and we know that the price point per square footage is going to be very high, and so, it's a risk that we're willing to take with a long-term gain that we're trying to focus on. I think forcing a garage, and these are all, I mean, I don't, I don't like the restriction, I like regulation, but I like flexibility as a designer and as a developer. And I think the ability to say no when the price point or a neighborhood doesn't warrant it is really important. I also wanted to cite that particular investment, because we bought a property that's near, near dilapidation, and we're actually having a debate whether it should have come down, we've, we've already made the commitment to go forward. But what's interesting for us in this last twelve months was Joppa took an infill lot and put a little seven hundred and fifty square foot house right next door. And first, we were kind of like, whoa. Thought about it, and said, you know what? This is a neighborhood where any investment, no matter how small, no matter the type, if we want investments in neighborhoods that are at a certain price point, and they don't serve the community, we're failing our, the diversity of that neighborhood, and we're not moving it forward, we're waiting for this kind of idyllic solution. So, we decided to look at that op, as we're going to invest a, a price point that's twice, if not three times, what they're doing, but we're going to have neighbors. And we're going to have neighbors in a neighborhood that no one's going to invest in right now. And we think that that is a great opportunity, and we choose to look at it as a positive, as opposed to something that's holding us back. So, I would encourage you, as you reevaluate and reassess the ordinances and the suggestions, that you allow as much flexibility as you can to us that are developing in neighborhoods of this great community, and you allow us the flexibility in the marketplace to try to adjust as we look at price points, because it's not easy to work in that urban core. So, it was really just more of a mindfulness that I was requesting. And I, I don't want to say one way or the other, but I think the market will help us to dictate that. And the more we're restricted, I'll come to the board if I need to, but I'd rather have the flexibility to work with staff and to find something that we can get accomplished and move our community and our neighborhoods forward, not backwards.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atfield. Is there anyone else who we should speak?
Good evening, the, my name is Jerry Chivers, I'm treasurer for the Watcher Sites Neighborhood Association, live on Ward Four, south side of Des Moines, and sell building materials from Ward Four, south side of Des Moines. This morning, I priced a garage for a client, it was twenty-two by twenty-four garage, and had a four-twelve roof pitch. Just for giggles, I cranked in a five-twelve roof pitch. The added cost was four hundred and fifty dollars, that's what's called for in this page one thirty-five dash two. I would challenge probably thirty percent of the people in this room couldn't tell the difference between a four-twelve roof pitch and a five-twelve roof pitch. There's no added benefit. It's pretty much, you know, as I say, added cost with no added benefit. I want to thank the commission for revising the basement and the square footage things. This is the third meeting I've attended on this issue. None of the issues with the list of building materials has been addressed in the changes that came out this morning, as far as I can tell. You've got every material that can be used on the exterior of a building, defined on three pages of matrix. The, I spent the last forty years bidding jobs, most of them were hard bid situations. A decimal point, a thousandth of an inch can mean the difference between thousands of dollars between low bidder and high bidder. The, the four-page matrix where design requirements, it's paragraph one thirty-five dash four, is just poorly written, poorly defined, subject to interpretation, and needs work. The, some of the gentlemen have, previous gentleman asked for a week to redefine that. I think you're going to need more time than that, or strike that section in its entirety, and let the architects and building professionals determine the, the best material for, that's suitable for the exterior of a building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else interested in speaking? All right, I guess at this time, Mike, did you want to address any of the concerns that
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, tonight is nearly five years since we started Plan DSM, Comprehensive Plan, and three years since we started the zoning code update project. There have been countless stakeholder meetings, all stakeholders have had a seat at the table throughout this process from the very beginning. This code that's been presented represents a balance of all of those stakeholder interests. And while we're focused very narrowly on building side of things right now, and the interests of builders, and affordable housing, they've had a seat at the table from the very beginning on this, their concerns have been heard, and we've balanced that with needs for efficiency, with needs for predictability for neighborhoods, and for higher design quality in Des Moines. All of these things were identified in a stakeholder report that's on the Plan DSM website. We had stakeholder meetings with builders, developers, neighborhoods, planning commission, council. Every goal within that document that set the course for this project and the code that is front of you tonight, has been met with this code. Regarding affordable housing, there's not a single staff person that is not supportive of affordable housing. We work with that every single day. It's our community. Right now, I'll remind you, Tyler, if you could go to the overhead, again, in Des Moines today, our average square footage in Des Moines of all existing housing is twelve hundred and fifty-three square feet. It's twenty-seven percent less than our metro peers. Our average sale price of all housing in Des Moines is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That's all housing. To bring the average down to a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and the square footage is, is a, is a point in that, tells you how many units that we have that are below twelve hundred and fifty-three square feet. To bring that average at twelve fifty-three is, it's significant. So, every home that we build that's competing with the existing small inventory that we have in Des Moines for first-time home buyers and that, is suppressing valuation growth and limiting the people that are available to buy existing homes in Des Moines. This code will not solve the affordable housing issue, nor will the city by building just single-family residential. We're building two hundred units a year of single-family residential in Des Moines. If there's a fifty thousand unit gap in the metro, and Des Moines is the only solution, we're talking a hundred years to build the current demand at what's been built in Des Moines. Des Moines has to present urban solutions to all issues, including affordable housing. And I want to remind the commission that we've talked about how this code is supporting affordable housing. We're eliminating costly process duplication in, in hearing processes, we're implementing our transportation goals and land use goals that are in our Plan DSM document, which lowers overall household costs. It's not just the cost of the housing, it's transportation costs, it's healthcare costs that factor into household budgets as well. And this code tries to address all of those things to make life living in Des Moines affordable, not just housing affordable in Des Moines. The design standards are ensuring predictability, they were a trade-off for less public hearing. You've all heard the term NIMBY? It comes up, it's a hidden, sometimes it's hidden, sometimes it's not, when you go into public hearings. This code makes multifamily residential allowed by right in Des Moines, no longer requires a No longer requires a site plan review from Plan and Zoning Commission. We've said, we're not afraid of density in Des Moines. That's what our comp plan says. We're not afraid of density. And I firmly believe that how we're going to address the affordable housing issue is by providing a multitude of housing options from multifamily rentals to missing middle housing that could be owner occupied or rental, to single-family that could be owner occupied or rental, to rehab of existing homes. Our existing housing stock, to meet our sustainability goals that are in this comp plan, the most sustainable thing that we could do is rehab our existing housing in this city instead of putting new supplies and new resources into new housing units every single time. This code is reintroducing missing middle housing. It's, it's introducing accessory dwelling units into this code. I believe the accessory dwelling units is the way to get the smaller dwelling units that people are requesting in this code to be allowed. That provision is already allowed by the accessory dwelling unit provision of the code. That doesn't mean every single-family detached home needs to be smaller. There's a range of options in this code that address affordable housing. And then finally, we need to continue to contribute and support our revitalization strategies and this, this code is coordinated with those efforts. The city does support affordable housing. It is a regional issue. And so our suburban partners have to step up as well in this, in this, in this discussion. It cannot be solved by Des Moines. And this code alone is not going to be the end of affordable housing in Des Moines or We will continue to partner with affordable housing advocates. We routinely are putting community development block grant monies. We provide tax abatement regardless of income, regardless of sale price. We are partnering with the development community to get all housing built in this community. That's, that's single-family. We have multifamily tax abatement available on transit corridors. We offer TIF, tax increment financing for multifamily housing. We've been requiring inclusion, inclusionary provisions in most recent tax increment financing agreements on multifamily housing to set aside a certain number of units for affordable housing. We are taking actions as a city to try and address this. But the point was made. Our tax rate is the highest in the metro. That's why we offer those incentives, is to try and balance that out. But total household cost is more than just the entry point or the price of the house for sale. It's maintenance, it's, it's, it's taxes, and it's transportation costs in a household. It all works together. I just wanted to point out very quickly, just two final things. And it was just interesting that I mentioned it, I went and brought the articles. So I had staff go to the State Historical Society and just pull some news articles from the time when this last zoning code was adopted. So one of those was discussion about billboards. Surprise, surprise. Been probably addressed five times since I've been here, but it's interesting to see it was still an issue in 1961, or 64 in this instance. The argument, the issue here was, the city found an archaic regulation in, in the code that said you couldn't regulate or could not advertise alcoholic beverages on billboards. So we were doing content-based regulation of billboards. They found that and we found out we had all these billboards across town that had, had billboards that were advertising alcohol. And there was a call by the council to take those billboards down because they were illegal under the code. Well, if we tried to do that today, we'd be sued over content of, First Amendment, free speech, and regulation of signage that's content-based. So just interesting that that was one thing. I want to point out that our code does not regulate based on content. The other thing was interesting at that time, call for action on housing. And this document talks about 1961, that voters failed to approve establishment of a housing authority for the city of Des Moines. And in 1964, there was a two-year study that occurred on affordable housing by the mayor's committee, and it turned up no practical alternatives to subsidizing housing for low-income families. Private enterprise has been unable to build the necessary units for rent or for sale at a price the lowest-income families can afford. This is an issue that existed 54 years ago and it still exists today. We adopted a zoning code in 1964 and we still have the issue today. We'll adopt a zoning code today or in the near future and this issue will continue going forward. The zoning code is not the cause of it. It existed before both codes were, both codes have been even considered. So I guess in final point, I believe that the code in front of you tonight is a balance of all stakeholder interests that have been, have been a part of this process from the very beginning. And I would urge the commission to make a recommendation tonight to move this project on to the city council and move, move adoption of this code. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. Could you respond to Mr. Henning's statistics about garage, the value of a garage versus no garage? I mean, I was glad to see that, you know, the basement, you know, you've, you've addressed that, but what about the garage in terms of, he said there's not that much difference?
I've not seen the numbers on their analysis and I don't have the numbers that our planning staff did. One of our assistant planners did that study as part of the, a study on our fair housing policy and looked at the valuations and it was also addressed as part of the CZB study that was done on our Invest DSM project. So I don't have those numbers tonight, but I certainly have not reviewed Mr. Henning's numbers either. Our belief is, is that the garage is a market factor that without that, a home without the garage is not selling at a higher, as high of a price as the homes that are having those garages over time. They certainly are not getting built in Des Moines over time. If, if they're not included with the initial construction, they're, they're rarely getting built after. I know that the NFC Financing has programs assist with building those garages. And we provide funding for Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity is building homes in West Des Moines. West Des Moines has a garage requirement. They build garages in West Des Moines. They, they've had it for 10 years in West Des Moines. Habitat in Cedar Rapids is building garages and basements. It is possible. The city has been a partner in, in providing assistance for programs and we will continue to provide assistance for affordable housing providers like Habitat and Home, Inc. And there's opportunities for requesting additional funds under our existing programs to cover increased costs that may be created by this code.
All right. Thank you.
I was about this last time and I think you weren't sure and I should have asked you to look into it, but I was wondering, I'm still confused about the duplex requirements. So I just want to clarify that a duplex in housing B through D, where it says that each unit must meet all of the requirements of the building type, with no basement would need to be 2,500 square feet if it's one, if it's one story, because each one would need to meet the, each, each.
Each unit, each unit would have to comply with the square footage standard or ask for relief to that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the commission?
No, there's somebody else who wants to, somebody did.
Are you responding to something that he said? Okay.
Lance Henning, Habitat for Humanity. West Des Moines did work to change their policy and they do, we are building two homes without garages in West Des Moines. The only city in the metro area requiring garages is Clive. And Des Moines has an, or West Des Moines has an ordinance that allows for affordable housing to not have to build a garage.
Thank you. All right, commission, what's your pleasure?
Who's going to be first?
I'll move staff. And I'll move staff because we've been working on this for a long time. And there's time between now and the council hearing and other times for more stuff to get talked about, but I believe that staff has done their job and we should do our job and send this on for the council to, to figure out.
So there's a motion to approve the staff recommendation as presented. Any other?
Can we discuss? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I want to thank everybody for putting this together. I think it's spectacularly done and I really appreciate all the time that's, that's gone into it. I'd like to offer two friendly amendments just to see how, how they go. And I guess the first friendly amendment would be to remove the minimum house size for housing types B, C, and D.
Okay, can you give me the A, B, C, where you are in the amendment?
I am looking at the overall proposal and I am suggesting that wherever it refers to minimum house sizes in houses B, C, and, housing types B, C, and D, that we remove the minimum house size. And I guess I'm just wondering if that's acceptable.
No, thank you.
Then my next friendly amendment would be, would you be willing to remove the garage requirement in the same house types?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I might make a comment. I've been working in community development for the past 12 years and specifically in rural communities. And I grew up here and spent six decades here in the mid, growing up. And I've seen what lack of affordable housing has done to Iowa communities. The lack, the middle class has been hollowed out when manufacturing middle-class jobs were taken out of the community and with restructuring of private employers. This, I see the hollowing out of the middle class of this community on the housing side of this. You're taking, putting in, I think, too restrictive minimum sizes. I think we need to be flexible and creative. You have to remember that this country's always developed a housing philosophy to adopt housing to the economic standards. The first 20 years of the 20th century were boom years, the 30s were depression, and then followed by war. In 1950, the average new construction was 983 square feet. You see that across a lot of times when, based upon the economic status of the country, housing had to be adjustable. I think this is too restrictive and I would oppose the, any motion adopting minimum standards that would hollow out a middle-class people who are firefighters, teachers, and average workers in private industry from being able to afford a first-time house. People start off on the first-time house with a house maybe with no basement and no garage, then they move up with building equity. When you have starter homes at 225 and 250, that's talking about people who are earning $75,000 to $100,000 average income, that you're pushing into the upper-middle class. So I'm opposed to that and I will vote against it. And although I also want to comment about the three city council people who put a compromise together, the process calls for the, this to go before the planning and zoning. I'm personally friends with all three of them, but they overstepped their bounds in that and I think that this compromise may work out with PUDs and the Economic Development Department, but it's not for the benefit of this community and I will vote no against it.
All right, Francis.
Again, I know the time, you know, that people have spent on this and it's been a long time. But I'm just wondering, since the planning commission, or the planning staff responded to the last, you know, the comments on the last meeting, I'm just wondering if, if we need more time to think about this. I don't, I'm just throwing that out.
So, Jan.
Because we, you know, we did get the update.
I understand what you're suggesting. And since we have a motion on the floor, I think unless he accepts it as a friendly amendment, you're proposing something else. You see what I'm saying?
If it fails, then we can do something else. If it fails, we can do something else.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that Jan understood the implication.
We can have a discussion. I don't think we should stop discussion.
Yeah, we're just throwing that out for discussion.
Okay. Greg.
Yeah, I want to kind of throw out a few thoughts fairly quiet on this to date. I really appreciate everyone that's been here and all the work and things that have happened. I do agree, this is monumental. I think the thing that, it's interesting how, you know, you find polarizing topics. You know, there's this massive book of information here and obviously because it's my profession, you know, we, the things that interest me that we haven't even talked about are materials, form, all the sort of things that make the mass. We spend so much time talking about square footages and some of those things. And I, and I'm not saying that those aren't important, I'm just saying there's so many other things within this document that we really haven't even scratched the surface or talked about at this level. I thoroughly recognize and respect that there's been years of effort put into this. For me personally, I, you know, I guess what I want to see is whether it's small or big or round or square, that, that value is increased. You know, the people want to be there. You know, I live on a street in the south part of Beavertale where there's arguably five, six housing types, all different sizes. There's a home for sale for $400,000 and there's one down the street for 220. I mean, it's just sort of crazy that eclectic mix. I appreciate that mix, you know, and, and so the market sort of, excuse me, drives those things. So those are the things that concern me. I'm not sure what to do about it. The only thing I can think of is that if we're going to have, and trust me, I, I really don't like the noose of huge form and material requirements. You know, I, I want to creatively solve problems in architecture in my own way. I don't think you can also put on it square footage requirements. You know, for me, it's a neither or. If we can raise quality debatably with material requirements and form and those sorts of things, then I, I don't think I would be in support of square footage requirements. You know, I, I'm watching in congregate residence design over the last 16 years that I've been here, that more and more, you know, we're looking at smaller and smaller units, the price per square foot of those goes up. I mean, there's still a value that you have to hit, but that tends to be market-driven, density-driven, other things drive, you know, how folks want to live and so forth. So I guess my, my long, sorry, short synopsis would be that if we're going to move forward with the form and material and all these other things that are in here, I would not be in support of minimum square footages.
Thank you, Greg.
I'd like to tell a story. In 1942, my family moved to Des Moines. I wasn't born at that time. The ordinance plan in Ankeny, it was by, founded by U.S. Rubber to respond to the World War II. And a local developer in Des Moines bought a big tract of land on the north side of the city. He built a number in about, maybe as many as 84, single-family dwellings. And my parents bought one. The, some of the houses had 750 square feet. Some of them were bigger, but not very much. And we're talking about 84 houses. Well, time passes and now we're, what, 70 years, 80 years, whatever it is later on. And you know what? People are still living in those houses. People are happy in those houses and people have maintained the houses. So, you know, just because a house is small doesn't mean that it's not a good place to live. So I, I share the concern about minimas.
All right. Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment. What I was encouraged by was Mike's comment about looking at existing stock and renovating a house. So if you want, you know, a lower investment, I mean, it's a, it's by far a greater house, but I spent $54,000 for a 3,500 square foot house. So I think that there are opportunities and I appreciate the staff bringing that forward.
Jackie, I will also not be supporting the motion. I, I think garages are a good idea. I do. I do not support minimum square footages. I think some people don't want to move into an older house and fix it up. They, they want a new house, and I think it would be unfortunate if we didn't make a, a way for that to happen.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion on the floor, and that is to approve the staff recommendation. And in lieu of reading the entire recommendation, is there any question on the commission about the recommendation before us? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Do you need a second? We don't need one.
I'm sorry.
We don't need one.
What was the question?
Somebody needs to ask your question.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, we, we do not require seconds for this, yes. Thank you for asking, though. All those opposed to the motion, please signify by raising your hand. The motion fails. Is there a new motion?
Yeah, I'll make a new motion. Okay. I move that, given the issues that emerged tonight, that I, I think we need more time to, you know, talk about this, discuss this. I would move that we, I don't know, continue it. I, I don't know that we are in agreement enough to vote, but that's my motion.
Do you have a date specific?
Well, maybe the 15th.
No, it's been alluded to the fact that Mike.
What's that? Oh. Okay.
Our first meeting at that.
A month?
All right, so.
So, okay.
Looking on our calendar.
It's the 5th of September.
For our next meeting.
Okay. So, September 5?
That too soon, or?
I'm not. I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, given what we've heard tonight, what we received today, I think we, we need more time to think about this.
Let's go through this motion.
And work out some, work out some.
I've been waiting 54 years. I think we can wait a month.
Yeah. Need more time.
A month is a reasonable ti, amount of time for the parties to consult with each other. Glenna?
Hello, all. I have a question. I don't have any issue with the motion, and you can vote as you, as you wish, but I think staff needs some direction, I know that I do, regarding what we are going to do in that month. We, as staff, with input of council members, our bosses, the city manager, the city attorney, have produced the product that you've seen in front of you, so the products from May, along with the major revisions and minor revisions. I've heard of a number of you say that you have concerns with the minimum square footages, and that's fair. But I don't see any direction as to what you, as a commission, would like us to work on in the next month. I'm not going to commit to, that the city will agree to support those types of recommendations. I, I certainly can't make that decision, but at this point, I don't even know what those would be.
So, Glenna, as you say, the commission is giving you some options, but if this motion were to include movement to the city council, and of course, does it require that they have a certain number of council that would reverse our recommendation?
I think only as to the MAP amendments on the comp plan. I would honestly would have to look at the code, but thinking just off the top of my head, I believe it would be that B of the A through G, which would be the MAP amendments on the comp plan.
I guess the point I'm making is the unreadiness that I hear among the commission is that there was not enough information for the commission to feel comfortable with approving the motion as is. However, since the planned Des Moines Steering Committee and three council people felt that with some amendments, that perhaps they could move it forward, it sounds like the combination of bringing those recommendations back, and as many people have stated tonight, first that we saw it was like in the last two or three hours, and giving us a chance maybe to ferment that, you know, what has been proposed, that could be something that we could forward, or, as Jan said, you know, further discussion among the Steering Committee and so forth.
Okay.
I guess, oh, go ahead. Well, just to clarify what I was thinking is, the last meeting, the public hearing, then the, the staff responded, and I'm just wondering if staff wants to respond again, given what they heard tonight.
I would imagine that we are probably not going to make any more substantive changes. I could be wrong, you know, again, I, I speak for my own opinion right now, and, and I certainly do not speak for the entire city at this, about that, but I, I don't, I think that we have tried to address many of those concerns. So, I feel like the concerns that were raised are ones that have already been raised, even at your last public hearing, and so I, I don't know what new direction there would be. I think, though, that what I heard you say, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, is that you are looking for more time to get the additional major revisions that Mike reviewed upfront. So, it's not that you are expecting us to come back with something new, it's just that you want some more time to think about those.
That's my reflection on it. I can't speak for the commission, but.
Yeah, Glenna, could I ask you a question? So, my sense right now, and I could be wrong, is that the commission is in favor of the, of, of sending recommendations forward, but would like the ability to send those forward without the minimum house sizes. That's what the previous vote suggested. So, I guess what I'm wondering is, can we just make a proposal and remove those? Is that going to create a mess going forward, or would that feel?
Well, so, sure, so what, what could happen today or on September 5th or whatever date? And I, I do want to let Mike speak, obviously, but just to answer your question, the way that this would be presented to council, you know, it would have, every time it has what your recommendation is, and so it would say, you know, P&amp;Z voted, whatever your vote tally is on such and such date after public hearing, and these were the conditions that they recommended, or these are the addition, additional languages or the subtractions that they recommended. And so, then staff can make a recommendation on that, either at the council hearing or as part of the roll call, and then council makes the ultimate decision. So, to answer your question, yes. I mean, if you were to say, we support this product, but we want to see X, Y, Z change, that is how it would go forward toward, to the city council.
Thanks. Then I think I'm going to oppose the, the motion, because I think we have what we need to move forward.
Okay. I, I think that Mike wants to say something, so I want to turn it over.
My only comment was, if you just disagree with the square footage, you can make a motion to strike the square footage, and we can forward this on.
Okay. All right, that's clear.
But Jan, then do you wish to?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Thank you. So, is there a new motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we move staff with the exception that all references to minimum square footage is be removed.
Question by the, all right.
Is that house types?
House types.
He, he, house types A, B, C, and D.
All right, so the motion before us is to approve staff.
Um, sorry.
What about garage?
Uh, I just wanted to ask, so, so a couple people did bring up the issue about, about greenfield development, where the concern, I think the concern that drove some of this with the minimum house sizes was the idea that people could go into new areas that would require new services and so on, that the city has to pay for, but the housing stock wouldn't be such, sufficient to, to support that. And so I guess I'm just wondering whether you feel that separating housing type A from B through D would be a way to address that, or whether you feel that it would make sense to just get rid of all the minimum house sizes.
I think we should get rid of all, I think we should void the minimum sizes. Let the marketplace dictate what people want to buy. The developers are going to build what people want to buy.
Can I paraphrase you, Mike? He feels that we should get rid of all minimum square footage because the market will dictate what individuals are prepared to buy. Correct? All right. All right, so the motion before us is to approve staff items A. Let me see, I have the right, let me see, here. Okay, here we go. To approve items A, B, C, and D with the removal of any reference to square footage, minimum square footage. All right?
For house types A, B, C, and D. For house types A, B, C.
Oh, okay. I assume that was written in the verbiage, so I, do I need to emphasize that? Okay. All right. All of those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand.
I'm just concerned about the garage requirement, especially in infill. There are several people that mentioned that they didn't, it's not necess, it's not a necessity, especially if you live in a, in an infill area. And so, I'd like to vote on this, yes, but I, I'd like to include something that, that, I mean, he said, Lance had mentioned that in West Des Moines, for affordable housing, that they don't require a garage. And so, if there's a way that that can be discretionary, I guess, I, then I could vote for this in good, in good faith.
Michael, would you accept, Michael, would you accept the amendment to your motion to also waive any reference to garage requirements?
No, I think there should be garages.
So, I believe we have voted on that motion. So, Emily, I think your option then is to make a recommendation to, or have staff put the notation about your recommendation, and it won't be included in our vote, but it will be in the minutes of this meeting, which will go to council.
Yeah, especially just in infill areas, I think having some discretion would be a good thing for the community.
Good point.
Would you all please be all known?
The vote again. Okay. So, we are voting again, just like we do at TADS, right? We're voting again on items A, B, C, and D, with the exception of the minimum square footage requirement. Any names? All right, thank you very much.
And then her comment will be.
And it will be noted in the minutes as the recommend, as her recommendation. All right, I'd like to thank everyone for attending both of these sessions and all the public hearings that we have held, and as some people have noted, government is you the people.
If I could, Jurassic Commission, thank you very much for your time this evening. Before you close the hearing, I would like for the commission to recognize, Commissioner who will, there's a new appointment being made on Monday evening, and one of our commissioners will be leaving the commission. Mr. Simonson has been on the commission for a great number of years, has served this commission greatly, and not just this commission, but countless, countless things in this community. And obviously, people know what boards and commissions Mike has served on, but one of the things that I, I just wanted to point out, maybe a lot of people may not know this, but I do know that the city was looking at putting in some street trees along Grand Avenue. We had some very small saplings that were going to be going in. They were available, but they needed someone to support the maintenance watering of those. And Mr. Simonson contributed the money that helped fund that watering to establish those trees on that corridor. So, little things like that make a huge difference in this community, and Mike, I want to thank you for everything you've done for this commission and this community.
I'm not going anywhere, so.
So, you're available for consultation?
Don't see me when we have projects, but I'm not going anywhere. I like that.
Thank you for your service. So, is there any other business before? A staff? Hello?
No, I agree.
All right. Is there any other business? All right, then the meeting is adjourned.